Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for December 17th, 2018. Welcome to all of you who are in our audience tonight. And we're going to start this off with our roll call. Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Burton.
Here.
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson.
Here. We have a quorum. Mr. Centers, would you lead us in the pledge this evening?
Gladly. (inaudible).
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And once again, welcome to our regular meeting. This is what we call our voting meeting or our regular meeting. Typically, you won't hear as much discussion tonight on the issues as you would during our Committee of the Whole meeting, and that's because we've already gone over most of the issues at least twice before at a study session, and then we really dig into the issues when we hear them at the Committee of the Whole. So tonight, there may be some perfunctory questions, but we've gone over these issues before, and now they're ready to be brought before the Board. One of the things that I always like to start out our meetings with is reading our district climate goal, because I think it's so important to know exactly what our goals are and where we stand. In our district climate goal, it says, "All students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment, where both students and adults respect and value one another." We think that is so important, and not only in this district, but outside of the district, anyone you meet. We, as the Board, we have disagreements. We don't always agree on things, but we disagree with each other respectfully. We listen to each other's points of view, and honestly, we've changed our points of view because we have listened. And we want to instill that in our community, and our children learn that from us. We have to be the examples. And you will see that amongst our Board. We will always be respectful to one another. We will always be respectful to anyone who comes before the Board, and we would expect that anyone who addresses the Board will do the same. And we appreciate that, and we thank you for coming tonight. So we're going to get right into our agenda, and we'll start with communications. Item number three, Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Good evening, President Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Oakwist.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I'm going to start off by having a couple of members of the audience join me at the podium before I even begin reading. I told them I would like to thoroughly embarrass them while I brag about them at the podium. So joining me is Jen Wilson and Sam Slack from Randolph. Ladies, thanks for being here. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring forward a special recognition for a group of staff members at Randolph Elementary who recently performed life-saving care to a student who was having a medical emergency. We call this recognition tonight the Team Effort Award, quite simply because working as a team is so vital to our everyday work in all of our schools and all of our departments. We know that together, we are better in all that we do. On a recent day at Randolph, a student for whom the staff gives frequent medical support was having a particularly prolonged issue that quickly became serious enough to require the administration of CPR by staff. The crisis response team at Randolph made up of staff members Kathy Coggins, who is unable to make it tonight, Kim Coochie, who is also unable to make it this evening, Samantha Slack, and Jen Wilson, have received thorough training for these types of emergency situations. They quickly assembled, each taking on a different role during the emergency, whether it was administering an emergency medication, documenting each step, calling 911, or performing CPR on the student. They all worked as a team and really put their training to the test. Gratefully, the result of their efforts led to the student's recovery, and he was able to return to school within just a couple of days. When notified that we planned to present them with this award, the staff member's immediate reaction was that they were just doing their job. They were also very quick to acknowledge the training that they've received to be able to quickly and confidently handle such situations. While we think that they were more than just doing their job, and for that, we would like to present each staff member with the following certificate, which reads, "Lavonia Public Schools Team Effort Award is presented to Jennifer Wilson for outstanding and collaborative effort as a member of the crisis response team at Randolph Elementary, dated December 17th, 2018, signed by Superintendent Oakwist and Mrs. Cindy Scott, Director of Elementary Programs." Thank you. Congratulations. And an identical certificate for Samantha Slack. You are Samantha. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Randolph Principal Mike Deraskovich to join us at the podium to say a few words.
All right. Thank you very much. I was asked to come and say a couple of words on behalf of our staff and this amazing team. I could not be more proud of them. So I put together a couple of words for this special occasion. First off, I want to thank you for honoring this amazing team here at Randolph, Kim and Kathy, who could not be here, and Sam and Jen. They're here every day at Randolph to protect and serve and support our students, and we're extremely grateful. By honoring their efforts, we call to mind all the efforts by the many amazing teams just like them all across our district. All over our great district, teams work together to protect, support, and teach our children. Parents place their children in our care each and every day, and we could not be more proud. I'm a parent. I'm a parent of medically fragile children. I know what parents feel like, and they need to trust and have faith in our staff each and every day. And I'm honored to have teams like these two and the two that couldn't be here and the countless other teams at Randolph and across our district to support our students. It really is a tremendous thing. So I'm so thankful for the Lavonia School Board, who took the opportunity to recognize these amazing educators with the teamwork award. They're a great team. I feel lucky to have them at Randolph each and every day. We can learn from them how to face challenges with strength and care. Thank you very much to Kim and Kathy, who could not be here tonight, and Sam and Jen, who are here to accept this award. You make a difference every day for the lives of the students at Randolph. So thank you very much.
And that's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Do we have any comments from the Board? Mrs. Burton.
As a parent, you're standing there as professionals and saying, "You just did your job." But to that family, you changed that family forever. To think that they could be facing Christmas without their little guy, you changed them forever. You changed their family, not only with this little one's life, but thank you.
Absolutely. Other questions or comments?
Not much I can comment.
You can't beat that.
You guys are amazing.
Thank you.
Don't ever think it's just your job to save a life. You guys are great.
Okay. Any other tears?
I know. It's burning out with some tears.
And you know, I realized that I had forgotten at the beginning to indicate to anybody who's watching at home and want to follow along with our agenda, you can do so by going to our website, lavonierpublicschools.org, highlight over the Board tab, and you can drop down and see the agendas. And anybody here who wants to stay around and watch our agenda, you can pick one up on the table outside. Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to take a short break after B. So if you want to go on to item C, 3B, Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we're grateful to have a dear friend of LPS, Mr. John Wilkerson of ZFTRW Automotive, here to carry on a tradition that is now 19 years in the making. John, would you please join me at the podium?
While he's doing that, Mrs. Jenkins, why don't we go ahead and get a motion? Could I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Yes, Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District accept the generous donation of $3,500 from ZFTRW Automotive to Lavonia Public Schools.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Burton. Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. Go ahead.
Thank you. For nearly two decades, ZFTRW has generously supported our district's early literacy programs with an annual donation. And I was thinking about this earlier, and Mr. Wilkerson has been here all 19 of those years to present the check to the district.
My honor.
To date, the company has given a whopping $86,000 for our early literacy programs through the years. I should also mention that the $3,500 donation is coupled tonight with a generous $1,500 donation to the LPS Education Foundation.
Oh, thank you.
For the early literacy donation, the district has utilized those funds for materials and resources to support our youngest students as they learn how to read and write. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief Academic Officer Teresa O'Brien to join us at the podium to talk a bit about how the funds were used last year and how they will be used this year.
Thank you. I just wanted to share with you that last year's donation we used to support our word study program. Our word study program is helping students with phonics, high-frequency words, spelling, and vocabulary in our lower grades, and teachers receive professional development around that, and we also got materials to support that. Another thing we used your donation for was to purchase some additional Next Steps to Guided Reading books for our lower-L teachers. There was a new version that came out last year, and so we bought some of the newest version. This year, our plan to use your wonderful donation is to support, again, guided reading at our lower-grade levels. We are adopting a new program, Literacy Footprints, and have begun to do the professional development for that. And the first group of teachers that went through that have already identified that there are some, so our second-grade teachers have had professional development, that they need some kindergarten things for their kids who are below grade level. So we've created a list that we could use your donation to help support differentiating guided reading in our lower-L classrooms. So I just wanted to personally thank you for all of you, all of your support of our early literacy initiatives. They have made a difference for our teachers and for our schools, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you so much.
And to commemorate the occasion officially, we have a certificate of appreciation, Lavonia Public Schools Certificate of Appreciation to ZFTRW Automotive for its continued support and commitment to Lavonia Public Schools' early literacy programs, dated December 17th, 2018, and this is signed by Superintendent Oakwist. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Well, 19 years, I feel like I'm just among friends when I come, really. I mean, it's...
So do we. You are. Yes.
You know, you're never as popular as when you come with a check. Even so, no, it's an amazing thing. I mean, what's happened with this, you know, I know it's been over $85,000, but it's more than money. It's what the teachers and what the school district has done to institutionalize this in early literacy. I mean, I remember starting this back with Elaine Coontz and Donna McDowell years and years ago. Amazing people. I mean, and everyone else that I've met has been dedicated and have used these gifts in amazing ways. So, you know, I can't think of anything more important than, you know, literacy for our children at early ages. I really, you know, I know we have elementary school teachers here that did an amazing thing, got a little teared up there, I mean, saving a life, that's incredible. Today, I also had the amazing honor of going over to Hayes Elementary and dropping off our adoptive family, which we've been doing now for over 10 years as well. And the outpouring from our people in Lavonia is just amazing. We had a whole cube van full of things for six different families. So, you know, it's just, it's a blessing for us. We're coming up on the Christmas season, the holiday season, but helping others is, you know, what it's all about. So this gift, the gifts we were able to give today, I mean, it's just an incredible blessing for us. It's not like, it's just giving money, it's helping people in our community. So, again, it's an honor to be here again. I hope to make it '20 next year.
So do we.
Yeah. And again, I really salute everybody at Lavonia Public Schools for all they've really done with these gifts. So, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Jarvis.
I would contend that helping a child to discover literacy and lifelong reading is also saving a life.
Yeah. I mean, it's a skill that is going to pay off for years and years, and it's something I think that sometimes seems a little more lacking today than it has been in the past. So the more we can do at an early age, the better off we are.
You are right.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, we have a motion to accept the generous donation of $3,500 from ZFTRW. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the roll?
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Burton.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson.
Yes. And that motion carries. And at this point, we're going to take a short five- to ten-minute recess. Thank you.
Did you want to do my update?
Good evening, and we're back from our break, so we'll pick up with Agenda Items 3C, district update from the Superintendent. Mrs. Oakwist.
Thank you, President Johnson. Once again, we would like to thank our colleagues from Randolph, who were here with us this evening. We are so proud of your efforts and that you represent so many amazing staff in our school district. We also would like to thank John Wilkerson from ZFTRW here with us. A 19-year commitment from a community and business partner is so truly impressive, and John mentioned that it's a blessing that he and ZFTRW are able to provide this support to our district, while we consider his efforts and that of ZFTRW a blessing to us. So thank you. We have some great news to share with you, as usual. This evening, the Hoover EcoAction Team will be receiving a community achievement award from the Lavonia City Council, I believe, as we speak. The EcoAction Team is excited to receive this award on behalf of the Hoover community. As I shared in an earlier district update, I believe in October, the work of the EcoAction Team, which you may remember we highlighted as a district point of pride last year at one of our board meetings, has earned Hoover the distinction of being the first school in Michigan to achieve green flag status by the National Wildlife Foundation. So they have been very committed with their eco-action efforts. We are so proud of them, and we thank the Lavonia City Council for recognizing our wonderful students, staff, and parent volunteers. We would like to recognize and congratulate one of our very own recent LPS grads from Churchill High School, Christopher Jarvis, who has achieved Eagle Scout status. Christopher completed his service project by planning for the building and sharing of six buddy benches. The benches were constructed by Chris and his volunteer team after he raised the funds to purchase all of the necessary materials for the project. These vibrant additions to six of our elementary playgrounds are used to encourage students to extend a friendly invitation to play or to hang out with a classmate who is looking for a buddy. They are so greatly appreciated by our schools. His efforts not only on this project, but all of the efforts leading up to this accomplishment should be congratulated, so we certainly extend our very best to Christopher on this outstanding achievement. Our Franklin Wrestling Team won the city championship in a close match last week, came down to the final few points with Churchill coming in close, a close second by four points. So congratulations to our Franklin wrestlers. We are proud to share with you that Elizabeth Herring, one of our teachers at Churchill High School, is among the top 10 finalists in the Grammy Music Educator Awards Program. There are more than 2,800 nominees across 50 states. We will find out in early January if she is selected. The winner is then invited to the Grammys in New York City and also receives a $10,000 award and a grant for his or her school. So congratulations to Ms. Herring for being recognized in the top 10 across the nation. It's anchors away for Franklin Senior Russell Rousnel, who recently received notification of his appointment to the United States Naval Academy Class of 2024. The Naval Academy has an extremely selective acceptance rate, and candidates must prove themselves to be exceptional students, top athletes, and proven leaders. Only 8% to 9% of applications and applicants receive acceptance. Russell attended the summer seminar session in Annapolis last summer and earned the distinction as the top candidate. He received his appointment through U.S. Representative David Trot, so congratulations to Russell and his entire family. Finally, this Friday, December 21st, is the last day of school, but don't worry, we have four great days of learning and leading ahead of us. School will resume on January 7th, 2018, so we wish all of our families, our students, and our staff a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and we look forward to seeing you in the new year.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist.
You're welcome.
That will take us into item 3D, written communications. I do not have any written communications. Do any Board members have any? Seeing none, that will take us to item E, audience communications. I do not have any blue slips. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to address the Board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 3F, response to prior audience communications. I do not have any of those. The response to prior. Seeing none, that will take us to item 4, consent agenda, and I need a motion, please.
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the Superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of November 26, 2018.
Report.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Would you take the roll, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. That will move us to item 6, instructional matters. 6A, approval to purchase textbooks for English Language Arts, Grade 9 and 10. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of Study Sync as the digital textbook and curriculum resource for 9th and 10th Grade English Language Arts at a total cost of $219,413, which includes shipping and handling. This purchase includes $9,765.84 in free teacher materials and $10,000 in free professional development support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and I believe Mrs. O'Brien is going to help us with this tonight.
Yes, I am. Thank you. I'm very happy to bring this recommendation to you this evening. This committee has been one of the hardest-working textbook committees. They've been working for several years on updating their curriculum, looking at resources, and when the Wayne County Enhancement Milage passed and we approved additional funds into our textbook adoption budget, they determined that they would like to look at published programs. Last year, they spent the year creating a vision for what they wanted their English Language Arts classrooms to look like. They created a rubric for measuring their textbooks. They looked at six different textbooks and narrowed it down to two. They piloted My Perspectives by Pearson and the McGraw-Hill Study Sync last spring, and at the end of the school year, determined they wanted to move forward with Study Sync. But the committee wanted to have the fall to do some additional teaching out of the book so that they would be prepared to support their colleagues when we move to a recommendation for a new textbook, which now we are ready to come to you for that. So Study Sync has been approved by the committee. The principals have had an opportunity to look at it, see it in classrooms, and approve it. Students have given us survey results on how they feel using it, so we feel very happy about moving forward with the purchase of Study Sync this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Burton.
I know we discussed this in the Committee of the Whole, but I just don't remember. After this approval, do we know when the materials will be ready for our students?
They'll be ready by second semester. We already have professional development planned for early January for the teachers, and the materials will be here, you know, before we start second semester.
Terrific. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Frank.
I just wanted to thank Mrs. O'Brien for, we've talked in length about this at the study session and at the Committee of the Whole, and thank you for your attentiveness to it and for reaching out to teachers and to just the time that you spent on clarifying some of the questions that people had on this. So thank you so much for this, and for the committee for all their work on adopting a new and different curriculum that we've had before. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the purchase of textbooks for English Language Arts, Grade 9 and 10. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson.
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. That will take us to item 6B, expulsion of one secondary student. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District expel one middle-school student for serious violations of Lavonia Public Schools' Board of Education policies. Report.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Wallenberg, you help us with this?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. As you are aware, when a student faces a disciplinary consequence of more than 10 days of suspension, we initiate a more formal process that designates an impartial hearing officer to review the charges brought against the student, to hear the defendant's side of the story, and to decide on the consequence, if any, that that student will be held to account. In this case, the decision of the hearing officer is that the secondary student be permanently expelled from the Lavonia Public Schools. The timeline for an appeal has passed without a request for an appeal. I recommend the hearing officer's decision be supported by the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Wallenberg. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the expulsion of one secondary student. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson.
Yes. That motion carries. That'll take us to item 7, business matters, and item A is adoption of the 2018-2019 First Budget Amendments. I have a motion, please.
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached first amended budgets for the 2018-19 school year, General Fund, Funded Projects Fund, Special Education Fund, Food Service Fund, Health and Wellness Fund, Debt Retirement Funds, 2013 Bond Series, 2013 Bond Series 1, 2013 Bond Series 2, 2014 Refunding Bond Scholarship Fund, 2013 Bond Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Sinking Fund, Technology Fund, Capital Projects Fund.
Report.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mrs. Smith, you'll help us with this this evening.
Thank you, President Johnson. Before we dive into the numbers, I wanted to take a moment to go over the district priority areas. These three focuses are in the forefront of our mind for all of our decision-making, including when we put together a recommended budget for the Board. So the first area is the positive culture, valuing and contributing daily to a positive, engaging, and respectful culture for all. The second is student achievement, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to increase student growth and achievement with a laser-like focus on the needs of our learners. And lastly, financial stability, responsible stewardship of our district's finances and resources, using our financial resources to maximize educational achievement, sustain effective programming, and promote an environment of fiscal responsibility. So like I said, anytime we're in the mode of making decisions and making recommendations, these are the focuses that we always have in the forefront of our mind. With that, we'll jump into the numbers. Before we look at 1819 budget, I wanted to take an opportunity to look at the 2017 budget to actual revenue and expenditures, and we were able to go in detail over this in October when we were taking a look at our financial statements, and then we also touched upon it last week at our committee meeting. Just as a reminder, on the revenue side, we came in favorably by $1.5 million, and we came in favorably on the expenditure side by $1.1 million. So this has two main takeaways for us as we look ahead to the 2018-19 budget. With our revenue and expenditures coming in better than anticipated, that means we start the fiscal year off 1819 with a better-than-estimated beginning fund balance by $2.6 million. And another thing to consider is also where some of these... And another thing to consider is also where some of these favorable events, things that we can count on happening again in the 1819 budget. So, with that, we'll take a look at our general fund revenue. On the revenue, I'm projecting that our revenues are going to be $2.6 million higher than what was included in the proposed budget, and I also wanted to, again, highlight what we had touched upon on the last slide, that our beginning fund balance in the general fund started off $2.6 million higher than what we anticipated. So, total available to appropriate, just under $179.4 million. Next, as we look at the general fund expenditures, a few items of note I wanted to point out. One was a memo that we received from the Michigan Department of Education over the summer, and it was a requirement that we start charging our instructional staff by building. So, we, as a cabinet team, took this opportunity over the summer to take a look at where all of our staff was being charged, not only to take a look at their buildings, but also to take a look at their job description and if that lined up with the function where they were being charged. And so, we made a change in this first budget amendment, and you'll see that on the pupil support line and also the basic programs. When I began the amendment, I aligned the basic programs more in line with what our '17 actual was, but then, as a result of taking a look at our staffs, it was primarily our elementary support teachers were being charged as pupil support, when really a bulk of their job description entails instructional support, so it more closely aligns with putting it under that first line of basic programs instruction. So, wanted to reassure anybody looking at our budget that we haven't made cuts to pupil support, instead we've reallocated those costs up to the instructional line. Another item I wanted to point out was the business services line. We had touched upon this last week. Last year, in 1718, we had a one-time expenditure in that function, and it was as a result of the 3% refund from the Office of Retirement Services, and the district had to pay a one-time FICA expense last year. So, as a result, during the proposed budget, instead of allocating that or adjusting that budget back to what it was back in 1617, I reallocated within that function to allow for a potential cost for implementing a new HR finance software. And now, in working with the team, we're being very judicious before we make any changes, and I don't anticipate that we'll be needing to make any purchases before June 30th, so I wanted to back that out of our budget in this amendment. Another item I wanted to point out was operations and maintenance budget. There is an increase there of about $370,000. Three main drivers in that increase, one of them was for maintenance vehicle replacement recommendation. That's before the board tonight. Wanted to make sure there was sufficient funds to cover that purchase. Also, I adjusted the security personnel based on our '17 actual costs, so that was an increase to the security personnel line. And lastly, we realized an increase in our property casualty premium for 1819, so I adjusted that function to cover that increase in insurance premium. The last item I wanted to point out was in the function for transportation. There's two grants currently out for replacement buses, and in those grants, they do a 25% match, and so what I did in this budget amendment is put a placeholder here so that we could have some discussion with the board to see if that's something that you'd like us to pursue, but for now, we're putting that placeholder there so that we do have money set aside should that be something that the board wants to pursue. Just a few items of note. Very pleased on the expenditure side that they're very close in total to where we thought we would be in the proposed budget, about $100,000 less than what was in the proposed budget, which brings our total available, less the expenditures, to a projected fund balance of 24.2, or just over 15%. And just wanted to take a minute because this is a huge accomplishment for our district. It's not a number that we've seen in the last number of years. So, I wanted to mention with this, the expenditures in total, when we look back over the last couple of years, we do see an increase in the total expenditures, and this would be expected because with the passage of the Wayne County Enhancement Milage, there was a number of priorities we shared with our public on how we would use the funds. One of them was financial stability, but we also made a promise to put additional student supports in place, as well as to retain and attract staff. So, I wanted to assure the board and the public that we are using the Wayne County Enhancement Milage as they were intended. And we're very happy that we've been able to both increase these student supports for our students, as well as increase our financial stability here in the district. So, as I mentioned, it's been a number of years since we've seen this type of ending fund balance. It was just a couple of years ago that our fund balance was under 5%. We were getting letters from the Department of Treasury saying that we were at potential risk of financial distress, and I had to submit some information from there to them, so I'm happy to say that we don't have to do any reporting to the Department of Treasury anymore, so that's something to be celebrated. I know most of us have been around, so we realize that we're a bit tempered in our response because we realize much of what has put us in this better position is due to one-time funding. We've had a number of property sales over the last couple of years, also the Wayne County Enhancement Milage, which we know was approved for a six-year term. We're hopeful that it'll get renewed, but we can't count on that at this point. We've also been able to do some transfers from other funds, a little bit larger than before, so that's been a one-time influx to our general fund. We also had some changes in expenditures. We have been responsible with the funds entrusted to them, and we have been able to make some adjustments to our programs to try to be, again, good stewards of the resources that have been provided to us, so. Also, very happy with this because, like so many districts across the state of Michigan, we are in a state of declining enrollment with our student count, and over the last, back from 2012, we're down 1,375 pupils. So, we look at it as in terms of full-time equivalent, so just under 1,400 students over the last seven or so years. So, being funded based on our per pupil amount, that has an impact on our district. Also, wanted to point out that it isn't because of the foundation allowance that we're seeing this increase. We've had very, I hate to say insignificant, because we're very happy for any increase that we see in foundation allowance, but when we look over the past several years, most of the increases have been well under 1% from 0.6%, and this past year, we did see a 1.4% increase in the foundation allowance. So, a few things to keep in mind as we take a look at our budget. I appreciate the time I had to go over with the board in detail last night, or last week at our committee meeting. One other question that had come up at the committee meeting was regarding one of our other funds, the Health and Welfare Fund, and we had a discussion on what the fund balance had been over the last 10 years or so, and I looked back. At the highest point, our fund balance in the Health and Welfare Fund was $4.4 million, and we're now projecting that to be $1.4 million. So, we have been tapping into that Health and Welfare Fund balance to help ease some of the pressures on our general fund from the increased insurance costs that we've seen over the last several years. So, with that, I'd like to put the recommendation for this budget amendment before the board tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Does anyone have any specific questions? Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Burton?
Just a follow-up question, a little bit of clarification on what you just mentioned. The Health and Welfare Fund, you said it was at $4.4 million. Do you know approximately when that was? Are we talking a couple of years or four or five? I just don't remember.
It was a number. I wanted to say it was definitely before five years, so back in maybe seven years ago or something like that, but I'd be more than happy to get an exact date for you.
That's okay, just a ballpark if we were looking at, you know, one or two years ago. And the insurance costs, you said that that was, that we utilized those funds to help with the insurance costs that just kept rising.
Yep.
That were costing both the district and the employees.
That's true, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other specific questions? I just wanted to say that, you know, we've endured a lot of challenges over the last few years. I mean, you've already indicated we've got some declining enrollment. Our revenue stream has been somewhat fluctuating and unstable over those years, but through your efforts and what your department has done, we're trending in the right direction. We're trending upwards, and that's very positive for our district, and we appreciate everything you've done and your team has done to get us to this point.
Thank you, and I appreciate the board, too. This wouldn't be possible without the board and the direction and the decisions you've had to make over the last several years, so thank you. And thank you to our community. I forgot to mention in the slide, one of the things helping our general fund, too, is our 2013 bond. There's a number of things that haven't had to come out of the general fund because we've had that bond proceeds to help us with security, measures that have been put in place, new technology purchases, so a big thank you to our community for that support.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to adopt the 2018-19 First Budget Amendments. Would you take the role, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll take us to Item 7B Approval of Roofing Contractor for Johnson Upper Elementary School. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation of the owner's representative, Lant Moran Cressa, to award the contract for the roofing replacements at Johnson Upper Elementary to J.D. Chandler Roofing Company, Livonia, Michigan, in the amount of $1,484,000 and a contingency amount of $116,000, a total project cost of $1,600,000, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contract.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and I think Mr. Francis will be helping us with this item.
Yes, good evening, President Johnson. I wanted to just recommend to the board the listed contractor of J.D. Chandler. Just to refresh yours and the public's, the community's memory, that last year, we had Roofing Technologies Associates do a thorough inspection of all district roofs, and based upon that report of status and condition of each roof, we had the ability to rank order, if you will, the roofs in order of most needed repairs or replacement through best condition. And based upon that assessment and our planned roofing projects for the sinking fund that we're doing, Johnson Upper Elementary is on deck for the summer of 2019 to be fully replaced, roof as well as the fascia panels on that structure. So, we do recommend J.D. Chandler for this, as the low responsible bidder, and as I mentioned, this will be part of the sinking fund projects. And one other piece that I wanted to bring up was that, going backwards to last summer, we had done in our first year of roof projects, a full replacement at Holmes Middle School. We also did a partial roof replacement at Franklin High School, and we also, at this complex, the transportation building, roof and a part of the warehouse building, wanted to bring to the board's attention that the district did apply for eligible energy rebates, and through Consumers Energy, based upon the increased R-value in those roofs, we're getting back almost 14, about $14,450 in rebates, and I want to express that next year, going into the, or beyond the Johnson Roofing Project, anything we're eligible for, we, again, will apply and try to get any rebates based upon the raising of the energy efficiency of Johnson. We'll apply and try to get those as well. Having said all that, our recommendation is approval of this vendor.
Great, thanks, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers?
So, this is, as Mr. Francis said, a series of roofing projects that'll be done in coming years, and this particular roof, if you're at home, you can't see the chart, but it's mostly red, and red is bad. There are a couple sections that, small sections, that they were actually rated as failing, so this is in severe need, and, you know, we have these lovely schools that have had all these great renovations, so it's so important to protect them, and by having roofs that will be solid and won't leak and need to damage, so very necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval of roofing contractor for Johnson Upper Elementary School. Would you take the role, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to Item 7C Approval of Commissioning Agent for Nichiiro Japanese Immersion Elementary School 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Lant Moran Cressa, to appoint Selinger Associates Livonia, Michigan, as the commissioning agent for Nichiiro Japanese Immersion Elementary School Bond Project at a cost of $11,385, including contingency, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Again, Mr. Francis.
Thank you. Selinger Associates is currently the commissioning agent for professional services related to the bond work throughout the bond projects. So, the commissioning agent does things for the district, such as review, mechanical drawings, doing the testing on the unit ventilators, coming back, you know, a year later and running a test on them again, et cetera. So, it's a professional service, and they're working on behalf of the district as a second set of engineering eyes, as well as testing to ensure that we are actually getting what the district has paid for through the mechanical systems and other systems. So, the bond team's been very satisfied with their work over the last several years of the bond, and we're recommending Selinger Associates to be re-engaged with the 2019 Nichiiro Immersion Elementary School Bond Project.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? Oh, I thought you were saying, okay.
Mr. Francis, I think last week, we talked about the fact that they come back right before our warranties expire to do checks to make sure that we take advantage of all the warranty opportunities that we have. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of commissioning agent for Nichiiro Japanese Immersion Elementary School. Mrs. Bonnefield, take the role, please.
I can do that. Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to Item 7D Approval to Purchase Vehicles. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of four Ford F-250 pickup trucks, three equipped with plows and one without a plow, and one Ford T-250 Transit High Roof Long Wheel Base Van from Gorno Ford Woodhaven, Michigan, for a total cost of $188,537.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis?
Yes, sir. This is a planned purchase for vehicle replacements, and these particular vehicles will be replacing some of the oldest vehicles in our maintenance fleet. The pickup trucks are going to be used by the district's Departments of Maintenance, Grounds, and Transportation. As mentioned, three of the pickup trucks will have plows on them, and the fourth will not. And the T-250 Transit Van is specified for the Livonia Career Technical Center's Building Trades Program. That's a program that takes students off-site and renovates and builds portions of a house, and the van is going to be used by the instructor, not by students, to be hauling a trailer and the supplies, et cetera, from the school to the site and back again. That particular item will be purchased through what's called added-cost funding through the state of Michigan, and that's specified for CTE programs and should be spent on CTE programs, as we will be doing. As for the first four pickup trucks, that will be a general fund purchase, again, planned to replace vehicles that are at, basically, they are used well, and they will replace the oldest vehicles in a bit of a domino effect in our maintenance fleet.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board?
If I may, I just wanted to just put on the record that the purchasing came from the My Deals Extended Purchasing Program through Gorno Ford.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Francis.
It satisfies the boards and the district's requirement for bid.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Burton?
Just one thing that we talked about last week, but for those who may not have been tuning in at that time, the Career Tech Center Building Trades Program used to be building an entire house from the ground. an entire house from the ground up, and during the recession, that changed a bit, but what we're doing right now is really a pretty innovative program in combination with the city. The city has identified homes that need this work done, and our students are able to get their building trades experience while they are helping the city with their needs. So we frequently think of school district to school district combination efforts, but this is a really unique combination efforts between the district and the city to benefit everyone, so just wanted to bring that forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? And I just want to clarify, Mr. Francis, that the van is not being used to transport students.
Right.
It's only materials, equipment, and things like that.
Driven by employee.
Driven by the employee.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval to purchase vehicles. If you can take the role, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item 7E, approval to purchase flexible furniture for Randolph Elementary School 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of flexible furniture for Randolph Elementary School from interior environments for a total of $37,594.56.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, and Mrs. Scott will help us with this. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. As was discussed at the December 3rd study session and the December 10th committee of the whole, Randolph has worked with interior environments to design areas in Randolph that will provide alternate options for students to use while learning and working together collaboratively. The funds being utilized are from the 2013 bond allocated specifically for student furniture. Areas impacted by Randolph's design include the lobby, leveled library, and hallways. The purchase totals $37,594.56, which utilizes the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Discount Program, and that satisfies the district's bidding requirements. We also want to thank the community for supporting the bond in 2013, which has impacted all our school staff and students and makes this purchase possible. It's recommended that the board approve the flexible furniture purchase for Randolph Elementary.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the board? We had an opportunity to see some of the furniture at the committee of the whole, at least conceptually, and it really looks like it's going to be great.
Yes, yes. Mr. Dreszkowicz, the principal, says that they're very excited to just get it there so that they can start using it.
Outstanding. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval to purchase flexible furniture for Randolph Elementary School 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 7F, approval to purchase flexible furniture for Churchill High School 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of flexible furniture for Churchill High School from interior environments in the amount, in the amount of $50,048.88.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Willenborg, you'll help us with this one?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. Through the study session and then the committee of the whole meeting last week, I described the flexible furniture vision for Churchill High School's Technology Collaboration Room. To highlight, the flexible furniture plan at Churchill fills a large open room with several small group learning spaces. It provides for a variety of table styles that includes desk-type tables, square top, high top, round top, and trapezoidal interlocking tables. Likewise, there are multiple seating options, ranging from stools, contemporary chairs, lounge chairs, to sofa-like, to a sofa-like arrangement. The Churchill staff worked with interior environments for the design of the room and for the selection of the furniture. This flexible furniture expenditures are from funds set aside from the 2013 bond fund to equip secondary schools with creative and flexible learning spaces for students. This evening's request for Churchill High School totals $50,048.88. I recommend this furniture enhancement item for your approval at tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Willenborg. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I just want to say, I just love this idea with the flexible furniture we just approved for Randolph, and now we're doing for Churchill. And I know when you list off the sofas and stuff, it may sound like these are just maybe lounge areas for the students, but I think each school has their own personality, and even though we've gone through each of the schools and we've replaced a lot of the standard furniture, I think that each school has come up with some very interesting and creative ways that match their students' individual, or their school's individual flavor. And for me, I really, this room that we're doing, that is being done for Churchill, along with some of the media purchase, for the media screens and stuff like that that have been purchased for this room, I just think this is just going to be a really amazing learning space for these kids, and is really going to encourage and just promote the love of learning in a great environment, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bonnefield, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of the purchase of flexible furniture for Churchill High School 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take that role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you. That takes us to item 7G, approval or additional cost for paper. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the additional cost for white paper, I'm sorry, cost for white copy paper for the 2018-19 school year for a total increased cost of $5,040.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton, and Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, President Johnson. The district has been ordering its copy paper through an agreement Wayne Risa has with Contract Paper Group for the last several years. The 2018-19 agreement does allow for quarterly price adjustments, and due to a paper mill increase, the company has had to pass on a $1.50 per case increase onto its customers. I've done some comparison shopping and find that this is still a very good deal for our district. Took a look at the Remse Price Bid for copy paper, also what we could get from an Office Depot or an Amazon, and this is still a significant savings for us, buying the paper through this agreement. So for that reason, I feel comfortable asking the board to approve this additional cost for copy paper for the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I just want to thank Mrs. Smith, even though it's a small amount of money compared to our overall budget, $5,040 is still something that we can use and really do a lot for our kids, so we really tasked Mrs. Smith to make sure that this was absolutely 100% ironclad, that we had to actually make this amendment to increase the paper cost. So I want to thank you for exhausting every possible avenue that you've taken to try and see if we can get this changed in light of the fact that it was the paper mill, or the paper shortage that sort of made this happen. So I appreciate your time and effort in taking the additional effort to make sure that this is, this is what it is.
It's my pleasure.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval of additional cost for paper. Mrs. Bonnefield, take the role, please.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item 8, personnel matters, and item A is teacher for approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2018-19 school year to the teacher listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and is this going to be Mr. Archibald?
Thank you, President Johnson. This individual was interviewed, along with many other qualified applicants, for a vacancy that existed in our instructional program. We believe that the teacher listed is the most qualified for this position, and therefore recommend that they be approved for employment. This position is within the 2018-2019 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval of teacher. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to item 8D, teacher for tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation, sorry, accept the recommendation of the superintendent and acknowledge that tenure status be granted to the following teacher, effective on the respective date. Laura Durda, December 13th, 2018.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Archibald, it's you again.
It is. The teacher named has successfully met the requirements for a probationary teacher to be granted tenure, including years of service and job performance as indicated through the annual evaluation process. We are asking that the Board of Education acknowledge that this individual has achieved tenure status.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to grant tenure status to a teacher. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item 8C, leaves of absence. May I have a motion?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the request for leaves of absence as listed below. Michelle Portula, effective January 15th, 2019. Janelle Thorne, effective November 27th, 2018.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Johnson. These requests for leave are in accordance with the LEA Collective Bargaining Agreement, and as such, we are recommending that the leaves be approved as requested for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve leaves of absence. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Takes us to item 8D, resignation, and this is for our information only and needs no board action. That'll take us to item 8E, retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Juan Campos, Laura Jacoby, and Lynn Ninis.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, we bring before you the names of three employees who will be retiring. These individuals retire with a combined 63.6 years of experience with Livonia Public Schools in various capacities. On behalf of the district, I'd like to thank each individual for their years of dedicated service to the students of Livonia Public Schools, and ask that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation in their honor.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Absolutely, and good luck with your next job. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mr. Centers, to accept the resolutions of appreciations for employees who are retiring. Would you take the role, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item 9, hearing from board members, and our first item is A, second reading of board policy DE debt records. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for board policy DE debt records.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank, and Mrs. Smith will help us with this one.
Thank you, President Johnson. It was our intent to keep the spirit of this board policy the same, but update some of the terms to make it more understandable, so that the board policy reads, "It shall be the responsibility of the Director of Finance of the school district to maintain all records as to the outstanding bonds and debts encumbered against the district. He she shall keep this information readily available and report periodically to the board on the status of outstanding bonds and debts."
Great, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Frank, to adopt board policy DE debt records. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item 9B, second reading of board policy DF, D, bond sales. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for board policy DF, D, bond sales.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and once again, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, President Johnson. This is just a simple one-word change, recommended to swap out the word "people" for "community", so that the board policy DF, D, reads, "The Board of Education, upon a favorable vote of the community, in compliance with the law, may sell its bonds. Such bonds shall be duly advertised, prepared, and sold in conformance with the law."
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions or comments?
No.
Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt board policy DF, D, bond sales. Policy DF D Bond Sales. Would you take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item 9C, Second Reading of Board Policy DFE, Short-Term Loans. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy DFE, Short-Term Loans.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we're recommending a title change to this Board Policy, so that the verbiage in the title is consistent with the verbiage found in the Board Policy, and also another one-word change, so that the Board Policy reads, "Bids shall be solicited for all short-term loans which the Board of Education authorized, and funds shall be borrowed from the responsible organization offering the lowest acceptable terms. All loans shall conform with the requirements of the law."
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the adoption of Board Policy DFE, Short-Term Loans. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to item 9D, Second Reading of Board Policy JNA, District Scholarship Fund. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy JNA, District Scholarship Fund.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, and once again, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, President Johnson. This, too, is a simple update to the last paragraph in this Board Policy. It's subsection 7, and the policy would now read, "One sub-fund shall be designated the James P. Carley Memorial Scholarship Fund, and shall be financed from contributions to that fund received in memory of the late Mr. James P. Carley, who served as Superintendent of Livonia Public Schools from 1986 to 1988."
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That will take us to item 9E, and the next three items, our first readings is required. We need to have a first and then a second reading, and the second reading would come back at our next regular or voting meeting. So, this is the first reading of Board Policy JH, Student Clubs and Activities. And I think Mr. Willenberg is going to help us with this.
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. There's few items quite like policy progress. At a previous study session in a Committee of the Hall meeting, we have reviewed this proposal to merge Policy JH, Student Activities, and JHCA, Student Clubs, into a single hybrid policy renamed JH, Student Clubs and Activities. The reasoning for the merge is based upon the similar verbiage in each policy and that our school-based clubs and our student activities and events follow many parallel rules regarding approval and inclusion. The new policy speaks plainly to the notions that our clubs and activities must be approved by the school administration, and they must be sponsored by school-approved personnel. Our clubs and activities are to provide equal access to all students, and should their pronouncements or actions not align with the mission and vision of the school and the district, they may be denied or terminated of their association with the school and the district. I recommend this policy for continued review and placement on the agenda for a second reading during the January regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Willenberg. Comments, questions from the board? Doesn't look like it. I just wanted to say that this is not an easy task to go through these policies. Mrs. Burton has done an outstanding job over the years as our policy guru, but you don't just pick these policies up and look at them and one day say, oh, they need to be changed. This is an ongoing process that requires a lot of work, and we appreciate all that the Cabinet puts in on these.
And I'll jump on that recognition of Ms. Burton for her guidance through these policy changes and revisions.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so if everybody's good with this, it'll go on our next regular board meeting for second reading.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and that will take us to item 9F, First Reading of Board Policy GAMA, Alcohol and Drug Abuse. And I think Mr. Archibald is going to lead this discussion.
Yes, thank you. And you recall that we have talked about revisions to this particular policy at two previous Committee of the Hall meetings, as well as two previous study sessions. The changes are driven in part by the Prop 1 recreational marijuana proposal that had passed, and we worked in these revisions to provide some clarification for employees with respect to how marijuana use and such would be handled in the work setting. I just want to point out that while this passed, as an employer, the district still controls the employment setting, and therefore, as we revise the policy, we'll be handling marijuana, its use, and being under influence and so forth, very similarly to how the policy addressed alcohol use previously. That's perhaps the simplest way I can explain it. Again, these changes are to add the term marijuana throughout, and if I may just read a small section that sort of captures all of the changes in their spirit. As a, no pun intended, "As a condition of employment, all employees must be free from unlawful drugs and the effects of unlawful drugs, alcohol, or marijuana during the scheduled working hours and when they report to work. Employees may not bring alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful drugs into school buildings or onto work sites at any time. Use, consume, or be under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, or unlawful drugs while on school property, during their work hours, or while serving in any capacity as a school district employee." And there are also two other revisions in here. One, it was a reference to the Drug Free Awareness Program. That program is no longer in existence. There's also a section that was deleted where it references a list of available drug counseling and rehabilitation services for employees. We do have a very active employee assistance program. We currently run through U Alliance, and we provide information to our employees for assistance as needed with respect to that program.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I'd like to thank Mr. Archibald and his team for, one, putting up with a lot of questions and comments and working through this with us as a board. This is not one of those that just went quietly by. And second of all, I want to thank Mr. Archibald for helping us to navigate the fine line between individuals' rights as citizens and protecting the district and our kids. On the other hand, it is a fine line that we walk, and we don't want to infringe on our employees, yet we want to keep the kids safe and the reputation of the district as spotless as possible. So, thank you for navigating that as well.
You're most welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
And just so the public is aware, not only has the board and the Cabinet had extensive discussions about this, but our legal team has been consulted also to make sure that we are doing what's legally proper.
Good point, thank you. Other questions or comments? If not, then we will put this on for second reading at our January regular meeting. And that takes us to item 9G, First Reading or Removal of Board Policy JGFE, Student Bicycle Use. Mrs. Scott?
Good evening. Board Policy JGFE on bicycle use reads as follows, "The administration shall establish regulations governing the use of bicycles on school property. After discussion involving Board Policy JGFE on bicycle use, which was inserted into the Board Policy in 1988, we are recommending removal of JGFE from Board Policy, and this has been placed on the agenda for the next regular board meeting or to be placed on the next agenda. The student handbooks from the schools contain procedures created specifically for each one of the schools, where necessary, and communicated to parents as needed, just as they would for skateboards and roller skates, and so we thank the board for their consideration."
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Any questions, comments, input from the board? Seeing none, are we all comfortable to put this on for second reading at our next regular board meeting? All right, very good. And that takes us to item 9H, Hearing from Board Members. And as it has become our custom, we open up the table this evening for comments from our board members. Mr. Centers?
I wanted to thank Mrs. Garrick at Randolph Elementary, kindergarten teacher, for allowing me to come in to her school, do some reading. It was a great time, and Mr. Duraskevich, only slightly, what's your mic's last name, also wanted to just give a compliment to the board. I was approached by a neighboring school district whose board president told me that they're modeling their board code of ethics and operating procedures after ours because they feel they're so excellent. So, I know we all put a lot of thought into those, so I'm glad that others find it a useful document, but that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Just as a follow-up, if anyone would like to see what documents Mr. Centers is talking about, they are found on our website under the Board tab. Take a look for the four people out there who actually might be interested.
Other questions, comments? What? Not from the board? Okay, I went to the Livonia Youth Symphony Orchestra on Saturday afternoon, and Mrs. Jenkinson is a violinist. It was outstanding. Anybody who hasn't been to one of their concerts, I think they have one coming up in the spring, you should go. It's really amazing to listen to these kids play. It was really something.
And that was an anniversary, was it not, an anniversary for them?
It was. It was their 60th anniversary.
Sixtieth anniversary.
They've been around that long, so Mrs. Jenkins was there, and we cheered on Evan. He did a great job. I also wanted to, I know Mrs. Oakworth mentioned our wrestler, Mr. Rustnall. I want to thank him for his willingness to go to one of our academies, the Naval Academy, and to be willing to serve this country. It says a lot about him and his ethics and where he comes from, and I wanted to thank him personally for that. I also want to thank my colleagues. It's been a wonderful year. This is our last meeting before the end of the year. It's been a pleasure serving with you again. And this year, Cabinet, the same. We've all worked very hard this year. You guys do an outstanding job. You always get us prepared for our meetings and make this look so easy. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to be brought tonight?
No.
If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.